I'm going to call the meeting to order and I would like a motion to go at a normal order of business.
Okay.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay, do I have a second? Secuted by Trustee Kane, all those in favor?
All right.
Posed, so carried. So I would like to present two proclamations to two of our residents, citizens of service at W L N G that are going to be inducted into the Broadcasting Hall of Fame. I think it's a moment that Sag Harbor should be very proud of. W L N G has a longstanding history in the village and that legacy is now being carried on by Bill Evans, Gary, a longstanding member of W L N G since, I believe, the seventies, right Gary? So I would like to present the proclamations, I'm going to read them. First, Gary, could you please step forward? Mr. Gary Sapian. I'm going to read this, I'm going to read this out loud to you. Gary, congratulations.
Thank you.
Whereas Gary Sapian has dedicated his life and career to the field of broadcasting, beginning his journey while still in high school at W A P C Radio in Riverhead. And Mr. Sapian joined W L N G full time in, I was, nineteen seventy-five, where his voice, vision, and unwavering commitment to local radio became hallmarks of the station's enduring success and unique character. And whereas he has appointed, he was appointed Station Manager in two thousand and eight and later named President of Main Street Broadcasting in two thousand and twelve, leading W L N G through periods of growth and innovation while preserving its beloved local charm and community focus. And whereas his leadership has been instrumental in shaping W L N G into one of New York State's most distinctive small market stations, celebrated for its local programming, nostalgic format, and steadfast service to the East End community. And whereas Gary Sapian's induction into the Broadcasting Hall of Fame is a fitting tribute to his extraordinary contributions, lifelong dedication, and transformative impact on local radio and the wider broadcasting community. Therefore, be it resolved on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of the Village of Sag Harbor, it is my honor and privilege to present this proclamation to Gary Sapian for his induction into the Broadcasting Hall of Fame. We extend our heartfelt congratulations and deepest appreciation. Signed this day, fourteenth of October, twenty twenty-five, Thomas Cardella, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you all.
Mr. Bill Evans, will you please step forward?
It's good that you did let Gary speak, we'd be here all night.
We'll save that for the end. Again, thank you, Bill, and congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Bill Evans. Whereas Bill Evans has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to excellence in broadcasting over a distinguished career spanning more than thirty years. And whereas Mr. Evans currently serves as the owner, program director, chief meteorologist, and morning show co-host for W L N G in Sag Harbor, bringing trusted news, weather, music, and entertainment to the East End community. And whereas Mr. Evans is a twenty-time Emmy Award winner, recognized for his outstanding achievements in meteorology and broadcasting, and is also a New York Times bestselling author, did not know that. And whereas in recognition of his distinguished public service, he was awarded many prestigious awards, reflecting his dedication to informing, entertaining, and uplifting the public. And whereas his induction into the New York State Broadcasters Hall of Fame serves as a testament to his exceptional contributions to the media industry, his lasting impact on the profession of broadcasting, and his profound influence on the communities he has served. Therefore, be it resolved on behalf of the Board of Trustees and the residents of the Village of Sag Harbor, it is my honor and privilege to present this proclamation to Bill Evans for his induction into the Broadcasting Hall of Fame. We extend our heartfelt congratulations and deepest appreciation. Signed this fourteenth day of October, twenty twenty-five, Thomas Cardella, Mayor.
And the co-owner, my wife, Sandra, is here also from W L N G.
Do you want to take a picture together?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very, very much. Very kind.
His left.
Why, your right, sorry. You're, both of you to the right. There we are, almost.
Just go right in front of me. I'll take it too, no, you don't, and then I'll ask him to enter me. Okay, can I just ask you to all look over here at me, please? Thank you.
Please, 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 wait, wait, one more, one more, one more.
May I come in with, with Bill, thank you so much. Okay, I just want to be able to make sure I get everybody's faces.
One to toast, Gene.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's Tuesday, the Rainbow Room. Is the induction ceremony.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday, oh, I'll be there early.
Be there early, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Bill and Gary, thank you, for all your service.
Thank you.
Still out of order, we have Susan on Zoom to present her evaluation, I think reevaluation or amendment to her original presentation. So it's all yours, Susan.
Okay, thank you, let me share my screen, please. Thank you very much, first of all, for having me this evening and for working me into your schedule, I really appreciate it. When I last spoke with you about the Wireless Master Plan, I showed you some imagery from the towers and base stations that you have presently and the propagation pattern that was coming from those locations. Just to refresh everyone's memory, you have a water tank at S H O four that all the service providers are on. And then you have two buildings, S H O one, which is the Village Hall, and S H O two, which is the church, where there is one service provider at each of those locations and it's highly unlikely that any other providers will go there. So when we look at trying to improve your wireless coverage, there were two other locations that we were looking at that were already existing wire or tower type structures. One is the facility at the fire station and one is the broadcast tower. And so when I was presenting to you last, I showed you this map that demonstrates your general coverage from S H O four. And we don't include the other two sites that have wireless equipment on them because not all the providers can go there. So it'd be a false impression if we were to show you all of those sites with propagation. And the two towers that I just mentioned to you do not have wireless equipment on them presently. So from that S H O four site, everything that's shown in yellow is your predicted in-building coverage. The area in green is your in-vehicle coverage. The area in blue is outdoor. And then where there is no coloration, those are visible gaps. And when we, when I showed you the last maps for in-fill, you had some really great questions and some great comments. And so we redid the mapping based on the commentary that I got from you last time I presented. So last time I showed you the propagation from the broadcast tower at S H O five and I showed you S H O three at a hundred feet. And you asked what would happen if you went taller at the Sag Harbor Fire Department, up to a height that would cover the greatest area. So our engineers worked on that request and they found that if you raised the elevation of the future tower at the Sag Harbor Fire Department and you built it for colocation for all the service providers and public safety and in combination with the broadcast tower, what would that look like? And this is the coverage pattern that you get, it's pretty thorough. And then we supplemented with small wireless facilities and there were several comments about, well, how many wireless, small wireless facilities in the right-of-way would it take to not have any of those green areas? And so we remapped the small wireless based on the new height at the fire station and it ends up being approximately nine locations. Now those nine locations are shown in the pink dots. And those are general locations and ideally you would want those built for all the providers to share, but we haven't really seen a lot of that happening in the field yet. And so we say your minimum number would be nine and if all the wireless providers wanted to supplement that coverage gap, those smaller coverage gaps, you may end up with as many as twenty-seven. So then you also, yeah.
Does that, hey, I just want to clarify, the maps that you're showing, that's scenario one, everything is yellow.
Yes.
That goes back to your original slide that shows, yellow is superior coverage even within buildings?
Yes, that's your in-building coverage. And if you look closely, there is, there are some areas of still green and blue and
My house.
That's, so we, we added some small wireless facilities to cut, to fill in those gaps. And so that's what the map with the pink dots is.
Seems like most of that is on the East Hampton side of town.
Yeah.
Yes, and then you asked another really good question and that was what would happen if the broadcast facility wasn't used for wireless cell tower communications? And how much taller with the S, with this tower at the fire station need to be in order to cover a greater area? And what engineering found was that even if you went up to two hundred feet, you didn't really gain a whole lot more from this tower being much taller. So they said that really around one sixty-five is what you would need here. Going much taller doesn't do a whole lot more. And you can see with the broadcast tower gone or not part of the propagation pattern, that you see some more green areas showing up here in the village area and the residential area to the west. And so we added more small wireless facilities in those areas. And so to get a complete in-building coverage plan without the broadcast facility being used for personal wireless, you'd need anywhere from eleven to thirty-three small wireless facilities to cover the geographic area. So I wanted to share this information with you. I've taken all of this information and I've revised the wireless telecommunications survey that we would like to launch with all this new information. And so I'm looking for guidance on when you would like to start that survey. We recommend that you run the survey at least two weeks and really not much longer than three. And so with the holidays coming up, I was thinking, well, if we start the survey pretty soon, I could report back to you before holiday season and everyone starts traveling and doing things. You'd have all that information before then.
So I would like to get this started as soon as possible. My question is, you, you sent us a sample survey with questions in it? I'm not, I can't remember exactly, but I've been getting a lot of feedback from people, especially on, in my neighborhood or around the historic black community that are very much against a microcell being put in their area. So that, I mean, I'm not saying that's everyone, but I don't know if that was one of your questions on the survey, how did you feel about me?
It is, and I've redone that survey and it's available to you in the Dropbox link that I sent to you earlier today. And so the revised one is in there. And just keep in mind that the industry has lobbied the federal government enough now to where they're allowed to go in your street right-of-way, pretty much by right. What we would want to, what we would recommend is that you find out from the, you do the poll, you find out what the community wants to see, macro, small, hybrid, using the broadcast tower, not using the broadcast tower, raising the height at the fire station, all of that's in this new survey. And then we would take that information and we would build it into revisions, we would recommend revising your code that directed the industry to follow the hierarchy that the community prefers so that when they come in, if they were proposing a type of installation that the community does not want to see, you would have some leverage in redirecting them to putting in what you do want them to put in.
All right, so what I would, what I would ask you, just one more thing, Bob. What I would ask you to do is send that questionnaire out again, just separately and ask, you know, send it out to the trustees and ask them to opine and approve going forward with it, because I'd like to get it started as soon as possible.
That would be great, may I send that to Kate and have her disseminate it? Okay, great, I will take care of that this evening.
Do you have an image of what you're calling small cells?
Yes.
And can the small cells accommodate more than one carrier?
Well, the industry says that it can, some of the industry says that it can. And I believe them, the challenge is getting the other service providers to want to share a facility in lieu of them having their own pole that gives them more flexibility to go where they want and, and do maintenance on it when they want. That's the problem that we've been running into is that communities that we've been working with want them to have a multi-tenant pole. And there are some pole providers that build multi-tenant poles. But like I said, Verizon, A T and T, the service providers haven't necessarily gotten on board yet with that plan.
So that means then if you're calling for nine, you could be asking for twenty-seven if you want to cover three carriers.
That's what you just said.
That is correct.
Question for you, is Crown Castle the multi-carrier pole that serves the industry?
They do have a multi-carrier pole that they have proposed for install at the town of, along the right-of-way in the town of East Hampton. And they're working with the town of East Hampton now on a multitude of nodes that would have poles like that.
And then they've, they've told us, we briefly met with them last week, that realistically only a couple of carriers could go on a pole, two to three at most. Otherwise the, the system degrades too much, or the signal degrades too much anyway. So we really are talking about multiplying the number by at least two, probably.
And when you say pole, do you mean an existing telephone pole or are you proposing new poles?
So that's a great question. They can go on some of the existing utility poles, they can go on. They have to work that out with the power company. Most of what we're seeing though are replacement poles. They can, they have more flexibility to design the replacement pole or a new pole in the right-of-way that can accommodate multiple providers.
But it looks very much like a existing telephone pole with an attachment on top, is it?
They can and there are options for concealment where they can put collars around the wires at the top of the pole that go up to the antenna. And then they also have shrouds that they can put around the equipment like the meters and ancillary equipment that goes on the pole so that you don't see it as much. But if you want a fully concealed pole, then it would have to be new.
And just one more thing related to this, Crown Castle showed us some of their poles. They are in East Hampton, they have approval for doing the East Hampton town. They expect to come to us in the next three months or so for the East Hampton side of the village as well with T-Mobile. So that's another variable.
Well, we better get busy.
Yeah. But the, the advantage of having a tower that's a hundred and sixty-five feet and putting multiple cell services on that is it greatly diminishes the need for these microsystems, right?
It does.
A couple and that would, that would resolve the issue.
Yes, if we were to take the macro cells off of the facilities that I've shown in the maps, then the, they would probably come in and put in dozens of small wireless facilities for one provider.
Would we be allowed to build a new tower at the fire complex before we start the rest of the new work?
I think that if we, we go over the site plan again with H two M and find a spot that's, that wouldn't, you know, interfere with construction or demolition, then we could do it.
Theoretically, you could build it, where the rest of it.
Yep.
Because that would be important.
For timing, for sure.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you, again, I appreciate you working me in this evening and I'll get that survey out to you this, this evening as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
You had a question, Susan? Did you, you had a question?
Whenever it's appropriate.
Yeah, you can, you can ask whenever you want.
I apologize, but it seems, I feel like I'm, I'm sitting here in a déjà vu. We've just honored two people that are being inducted, Gary, fifty years at W L N G. And as the owner, along with my husband, of W L N G, I would just let you know that this could be our last year. We replaced, we bought the station eight years ago and it's since nineteen sixty-three, everything there needed to be replaced. Transmitters, antennas, the building, the foundation, the towers. We are not Castle Connolly, we are not Verizon, we're a local couple maintaining a local institution. And through Verizon, we knew when we received another station, we did load studies and both the towers failed. We were told five years ago that both towers needed to be replaced. Each project is a multimillion dollar project. So Verizon approached us about handling the tower at thirty, at twenty-three Redwood Road. Bill and I had no one that wanted to do Millstone Road because there's American Tower there and all the cell carriers are already on that tower. So we had no one that could help us there. So we said, all right, we're going to take out a mortgage and we're going to do that tower ourselves first and let Verizon put in the application for twenty-three Redwood Road. We spent over a hundred thousand dollars with Verizon in legal fees, having them do something that would be pleasing, that would help the community and help W L N G. It was a concealment pole with no cells visible, it was the exact same height, moved just in a different area, something that we on our own would never be able to afford. By the former mayor and trustees, that project was buried in an environmental SECR. And while this was happening, Bill and I did what we said and we replaced our tower up at Millstone to the tune of over a million dollars. Even though the town of Southampton expedited that application for us as an emergency with a building replacement because we were, it was going to collapse, our current tower collapsed anyway. And our antenna for the great W L N G dangles on a broken tower while we have a new one. We've, we asked Verizon to pull the application that was in this village so that we could put forth our own and take out another mortgage. And while I sit here after two people have been, you know, received such wonderful proclamations, I can't help but ask the question, why, when we have a tower that is one hundred and sixty-five feet, we need a one hundred and sixty-five foot tower to continue to operate our small business? And we are setting forth an application that is in your hands for a replacement tower? Are you even talking about small cells and creating new towers somewhere else? It feels nonsensical and impractical and it feels like you're nailing the coffin on W L N G. I know that's not your intention, but I stand here listening to this and can't help but, from a practical standpoint, understand why, when we have everything that we can to help the village with its cell problem and help W L N G still exist and Bill and I will take out the mortgage and make this tower happen and we will make it look concealed, why we're not communicating with each other? Why am I sitting here listening to this after such a great honor? There's been a lot of confusion with things that I've read, said, and we weren't allowed to speak before because that application five years ago was Verizon's and not our own. But I would implore the trustees and the mayor and all the residents of the village to not let W L N G have its final year. This is our sixty-third year, we will not exist.
Can I? Let me just, let me, first, let me talk.
Go for it.
Okay. First of all, the application is not before us, it's before the building department. So I can't comment on anything that's before the building department, all right? Counsel has been involved, there's been, I see the emails going back and forth, you haven't seen me comment. I'm, I'm going to go, I've, oh, this is my position, it's always been my position and I'll go on the record saying that if there's anything I can do, W L N G will not die. Okay, if it happens to come to this board that the tower needs to be replaced, you have my full support, okay, to have that done. As far as cell service goes, we have to explore all our options before we commit to any site. So it's nothing against W L N G, this is just part of the process that we have to follow.
In fact, if I can supplement what you're saying, this, this, the presentation we just saw in scenario one has two large tower sites there. One is S H O three, which is the current operations center, no site exists. The other is S H O five, which is?
W L N G.
Yes.
Yes.
It's in our presentation that we're examining the cell phone coverages with cell service at W L N G as well. It's not in our control, it's not before us now, but we're looking at all the options. That is our responsibility to the village, that's all we're doing here to try to get the best coverage possible for the village and look at the best options available.
I'll say this, when, because you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure, unless, correct me if I say anything wrong, you're allowed to replace it in kind, which means it has to be a lattice tower, you don't have to go through the D E C, SECR, all that stuff, which you do if you change the tower, which means changing it from a lattice tower to, for instance, a monopole. And the, the biggest objection last time was the fact that each of these carriers has significant ancillary equipment that goes with each service and it's not a small amount of stuff, it's like a trailer for each person. And furthermore, that is, the elevation there is like three feet. That's why SECR got blocked, SECR will not be called in if you just replace your tower. We're not making, we're not making like art of you, it's just that those are the rules. If you change exactly what's there, then you have to start over.
I believe that that's the application that's before. I haven't seen the details of it, but I believe that's what you're trying to do, is replace the tower that's there. Just put it in a different right.
Except that, you know, as I had mentioned to you, and our application has nothing to do with cell tenants. It's for our own. But I'm also saying at the same time.
Well, that's.
There's different engineering. There's different engineering, and there's different applications, and it is a very, you know, can't change things after the fact. You can only do it beforehand and but I do understand, I do understand that, and it's not, from my understanding also, it's not being considered by the building department as an in-kind replacement, which is a shame because we spent over a hundred thousand dollars on the Verizon in legal fees. The town of Southampton took our application and allowed us in kind to replace what was existing, but not Sag Harbor. So we now have to engage an attorney. We have to go through legal fees, not to mention that our other tower cracked while doing all of these exercises. And we have a tower in a residential area with twenty-eight people in the radio station and me and Bill living there, sleeping, that could fall at any moment. So, you know, time is of the essence. We knew we have known for five years that this tower was built sixty-three years ago with jury-rigged three different parts from various different towers. And who knows what type of engineering path was done? And we've taken, you know, great lengths to make sure that what will be built will will last long after Bill and I are caretakers of this station. But, you know, we can only do so much more and pay for so much more and withstand so many more requests without getting this done. So we need a new tower. It's desperate. We need to put our equipment up on the tower, and I really feel like the village should support all businesses, but especially one that is sixty-three years old and has two people being inducted into the whole thing.
I listen, I sympathize with you, Susan. You have my support. I do not want to see W L N G die.
Well, if you don't, we don't have the time.
If I could snap my fingers and and have you put the new tower up, I would.
We are out of financial means.
I understand.
It's on what happened to the village.
I appreciate you coming forward and sharing this with the public.
That's okay. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to go back into normal order of business?
I'm of it.
Second, seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. We're now back to normal order of business. That brings us to the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on September ninth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Deputy Mayor Hayder, seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
It's moved.
Motion by trustee Kane to have a second. Seconded by trustee Plum, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us now to our department committee reports. We'll begin with the treasurer's report. Is Alex available?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. We can hear you.
Okay, great. So this is going to be the financial summary of the results from August, and the revenues to date total approximately ten point five million, which is about sixty-five percent of the budget for the year. All income-producing departments are in line or exceeding the budget, except for sewer at the moment. And tax revenues are recorded as billed, representing about eighty-seven percent of the current total revenue. Keep in mind, we're about a quarter of the way through the year. So our expenditures to date are about four point two million, which is twenty-four percent of the budget. So we're just under. All departments are under or in line with the budget at the moment. The only exception being the Parks Department right now, working on some paving projects. However, a portion of those will be reimbursed reimbursed with chips. So that's it from me.
Do you accept the treasurer's report?
I'm of it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hayder to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us now to our departmental reports. But that brings the police, fire department, and ambulance corps. I'll start off with the police department. We had eight hundred and forty-four calls for service. Of those, we had four aggravated unlicensed operation. We had sixteen suspended registrations. That seems like a high number. We had probably because motor vehicle, you have to make an appointment, as you know, to get into motor vehicle. You don't do it by mail, right?
Do it by mail.
I can't believe the great state of New York, and we just have to make an appointment to get into DMV. It's ridiculous. It's just my two cents. Village code violation.
Wait online.
Well, village code violation arrest. We had one, one burglary, grand larceny, one harassment in the second degree, resisting criminal possession of controlled substance. We had one vehicle versus pedestrian leaving the scene of an accident. We had one criminal possession. We had one boating while intoxicated. And we had seventeen motor vehicle accidents in the month of September. We had twenty-six arrests. We had no DWIs. And we had one BWI, which is boating while intoxicated. And we had a hundred and twenty-nine uniform traffic tickets issued. I just want to address one issue that a local resident brought to my attention that I don't know how many people know Bill O'Reilly, the famous TV host, is now a broadcaster for W A B C, was on the air stating that Sag Harbor Village has plainclothes policemen in the bars, watching people drink, and then following them out and issuing DWI tickets. Well, you just saw from my report, we didn't issue any last month. And if you follow my reports, I believe maybe there's one or two a month that we've issued. So it's a complete falsehood. I had this resident who happens to know Bill O'Reilly send him an email. I didn't personally, I didn't feel it was warranted enough for me to address, telling him that it's a falsehood. I mean, I wish I had these police officers that I could put in plainclothes out in the street. But it just goes to show you, don't believe everything you hear or everything you read. Do your own research. So with that, that concludes our police report. Brings us now to the Sag Harbor Fire Department. In the month of September twenty twenty-five, the fire department volunteered for over two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven point zero eight man-hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to a total of ninety-seven calls for service. We responded to a mutual aid in Bridgehampton where we were able to save a dog. Multiple false alarms, assisted the park at their annual five K, served the community pancakes, and had a number of members and seven junior firefighters attend the Tunnel to Towers Run in New York City. And for those of you that don't aren't familiar with Tunnel to Towers, it's the Stephen Siller Foundation. It's a run that marks his run from his firehouse through the Battery Tunnel to the World Trade Center, where he perished with the members of his department. And it's a fundraiser to raise money for veterans and first responders that die in the line of duty and to support their families and to build smart homes for those that are physically disabled. So it's a great organization. And our fire department, Sag Harbor Fire Department, has been supporting that organization for many years. So my thanks to the department and the board of wardens for supporting that run. So we are now officially back into the monthly meetings, and we're looking forward for some training events that we have coming up, and that's from our first assistant chief, Gary M. Wilson, Jr., Sag Harbor Fire Department. That brings me now to the ambulance corps. The Sag Harbor Ambulance Corps had seventy-one calls for service. That's emergency calls. We had five work nights, three meetings, two training sessions, and five standbys for a total of nine hundred and forty-seven man-hours. And that concludes my reports for the emergency services. That brings us now to trustee Hay for the justice court, parks, and open spaces, and the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start with the justice court operations. Later on our agenda, you'll see the resolution approving the audit for fiscal year, May twenty twenty-four, confirmed excellent financial controls, timely remittance of fines, compliance, no compliance or fraud issues, and there are no recommendations for improvement. In addition, for September of twenty twenty-five, we've seen record cases, volumes, and revenues following the summer's rebound. It's just continuing. So far this year, over eleven thousand parking cases have been filed, already surpassing last year's total, and total revenues are over nine hundred thousand dollars gross, which should end up about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars net, one quarter left in the year. Post Sac on the Parks and Open Space Advisory Committee has met twice since the last board meeting. On the water access points, that initiative is being led by Drew Harvey. I reported last month that four of the granite posts have been put in place at the water access posts. He's working on three more right now that we authorized him to do as well. Six out of the seven of the water access points of village-owned property have encroachment issues that Bruce Scavoni of Enforcement is working to work out remediation of those with affected landowners. In addition, Post Sac discussed a lot of the work that's that's been initiated over the last several months around traffic in the village. So at the last meeting, which was just last week, we had L K M A meet with us because we've been working with L K M A. They have a new traffic consultant with us named Bobby Bovee. So both he and Matt Jentica met with Post Sac to discuss briefly the Route one fourteen data collection. And out of that discussion, they informed us that they'll be proposing to this village board phase one and phase two studies based on the traffic data. Question for this board is, do we want them to present at the next village board meeting in addition to giving us proposals for phase one and phase two?
That's a decision I'll make. I think that it's appropriate that they do that.
Okay. And just for more information, we asked them for phase one. Try to come up with, based on the data you've already seen on on Route one fourteen and the intersections for quick wins or, you know, low, low capital and no capital improvements that we can make to improve flow now, any recommendations they might have, and then save the, you know, more kind of exhaustive intensive capital and capital required improvements for recommendations for phase two or later. In addition, we discussed some of the other pending projects that L K M A again is assisting the village on, things like the Long Wharf Boardwalk underneath the bridge to Steinbeck Park, as well as the boardwalk in front of A Dock. So L K M A got a chance to meet Ed Hollander for the first time, and they've agreed to work collaboratively going forward on, you know, L K M A is doing the structural engineering for the the boardwalks as well as and Ed Hollander is doing the landscaping for them. So we explicitly told L K M A not to do anything with landscaping because Ed had already volunteered to do that. So now they're going to work together collaboratively, which is great on that. And in addition, L K M A, we've already approved for them to do a multimoto study for Bay Street and Hempstead Street to improve bicycle and pedestrian traffic on those streets. They delayed doing some of that work because we asked them to get the data collection done in August before the August and Labor Day before the season ended to help us with the one fourteen work. So they're going to move back to that study, and and that's a top priority for them. One of the things that they've asked us to do, and we're trying to track down for them, is the village-owned right-of-way beyond Bay Street. Bay Street's a very wide street, but the village owns right-of-ways that extend well beyond the street itself. So we want to understand what our right-of-ways are when we're designing multimoto transportation, bike paths, you know, sidewalks, for example, and and or parking. So that's a top priority for them. And the third one, the third one that L K M A and Post Sac has worked on in the past is the County Road Seventy-Nine Study that leads into the Jermaine Avenue intersection. Just a reminder, the county has said they own the intersection. We want them to, and L K M A help us identify that. We want to get them to do more work around that intersection before they go forward with their preliminary design, which we don't really agree with. So we're hoping that we can get them to, with L K M A's help, to get them to do some data collection because we clearly have a traffic issue there too during the seasons. That's. The only other thing I'll say is, you know, attended a regional grant partnership meeting with Southampton Town to talk about an efficiency grant involving multiple municipalities. Jen Messiana was there too, virtually, our grant consultant. She's the grant consultant for many of the communities on the East End. And one of the good things about that meeting was it emphasizes the importance and the willingness of Southampton Town and all the villages within the town that collaborate, collaborate on some of the capital expenditures that we're all facing, and to the extent that we can share resources and equipment. It's it it opens up the door to do that, you know, more collaboratively, more expressly, and it's nice to know that there's some grant funding that may be available to help us do that if we can demonstrate efficiencies across our communities. So we're working to gather information now, as is West Hampton, Southampton Village, North Haven, to support Southampton, who's going to be the lead grant presenter for this for this particular grant application. But there'll be more to come in the future. It's it's just nice to know that there are these opportunities available that might be available for us to help to phrase some of the costs of this community. Related to that, but different, is that we have later in this agenda, proposal from Millennium Consultants, Millennium Strategy, I think they're called, to, they they provide some grant reporting. So they, for a pretty nominal fixed fee, they can help us identify grants that are available from us at the federal, state, county level to give us a little bit more of a heads up and to curate them or to sort out the ones that we might be eligible for and we might be most interested in, especially ones that align to our capital planning. That's that's my, oh, I'm sorry. One more meeting we had last this past month, trustee Kane, Mary and Eddie and I met with Dr. Goldler to discuss water quality reports that have been issued over the past several years and some next steps. I mean, it was a good meeting. We we discussed the latest data on bacterial sources in local waters. And I think that, you know, where we came out with was that, you know, our focus point as a village for remediation should be the stormwater issues that are facing this village. That's where the highest contamination is coming from. There was some discussion about the differences between the testing studies that were done, the DNA testing that identifies the source of bacteria with the actual bacteria results that don't really distinguish source. It's clear that a lot of the DNA testing that identifies human versus other sources of bacteria, small mammals, et cetera, you know, in the past has shown that the human bacteria is oftentimes dead. That's the the bacteria that comes from the human gut that's because it's being treated at the sewage treatment plant. And so our focal point, and Dr. Goldler agrees with us, should be on, from a village perspective and for capital investments and improvement, remediating the stormwater issues that we have where the stormwater is being released unfiltered in many of our sites into the bays. And so that's where we're focusing our our near-term capital investment work on in the next three to six months to try to try to get some solutions for those in place and continue testing those sites to show both before and after results of that remediation work that we hope to do soon.
I'll conclude with that. Okay. Is trustee Corish online? Does he want to?
No.
Okay. So we'll dispense with the sewer department, village grants, and the Z B A. That brings us now to trustee Plum with Public Works, Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review.
Thank you, Mayor. The new Elgin mechanical broom sweeper has arrived. Make sure you wave at it when it goes by. All road neighborhoods swept throughout the month. Asphalt repair and patching continues. Treat pruning continues. Cleaning and cleaning of the light posts continues. They assisted with the cleanup for Harbor Fest, providing extra refuse collection. Assisted with the cleanup of the American Music Festival, extra refuse collection. Highway crews continue to assist environmental committee members of water testing at Windmill Beach. And we've done that recently. And we've done that recently. Water testing at Windmill Beach?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Deployed the sand sifter, Windmill Beach, sorts the junk out and graded the lot, sandlot at Haven's Beach and the Sag Harbor dump impound in preparation for the Surshtet project staging areas. That's it for the Public Works. The Z B A, the H P R V is doing well. We're going to accept the resignation of a consultant later in the meeting, which he wasn't, will just accept that later on. And otherwise, the only other thing I can say is that last, the last meeting at ten o'clock in the morning, they had four items on the agenda. And by the time the meeting started, they had eleven. Which I know that's not you, but I got to do something about that because that means that that board had a matter of hours to go look at seven projects before the meeting, which is not acceptable in my opinion.
I would agree with that, Bob. Let's we need to, we need to find out what, where the miscommunication is.
And I think, you know, the building department tends to try to be accommodating, but we don't have to bend over backwards. There should be like a week. Seven days before the meeting, we don't take anything. I believe that to be the case for all the boards, by the way. Anyway, and so and as far as the Environmental Advisory Committee, Southampton Engineers reported they have nine tons of food that have been recycled, recycled through the three facilities, Sag Harbor being by far the highest, forty-three percent. The first stage of the community grant for energy efficiency at Village Hall be awarded to retrofit interior lighting. Next up will be bits for updated HVAC. I assume that's changing bulbs, lamps. Yeah, okay. And then language has been drafted for skip to stuff, which will come up later in this meeting as well. I would just like to throw in here that Bill, the name of Bill Riley's news show is No Spin News. Thank you. And that's my report.
That's actually comical. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Bob. That brings us now to trustee Kane with the Building Department, Harbor and Docks and the Harbor Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll start with the Building Department. Continues to be very active for the month of September. There were ten building permits that were issued, seventy-four inspections, two rental permits. So that's a little bit lower, but you know, we, much higher earlier in the year for the summer rentals. There were fourteen notices of violation and two stop work orders. Total receipts were one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars, which brings us up a year for year-to-date. We are at a total of seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight seventy-five. And that's just slightly behind last year's pace year-to-date. But as was noted, we're ahead, we're ahead of budget for the year. So that feels good. And also with the Building Department, the Office of Fire Marshal, which is Bruce Cavoni, continues to be very busy. There were twenty-four complaints taken and they were all addressed. There were nine scheduled fire safety inspections. There were five safety additional inspections after the first ones. There were fourteen notices of violations written, the total of twenty-two violations. The active part there is also to look at special event applications. There were three for this past month with one that had to do several follow-ups. And over this, over the month, there were ten fire department alarms with fourteen follow-ups. There were four hours of training and there was five night slash weekend shifts that were, and and we all understand that, given you've heard, you know, how busy the month of September was with Harbor Fest, with the arts and crafts and with the music. So we like to have an inspector on duty during the weekends when we have things like that. But also to be noted, there were three ten inspections and twelve tree removal inspections. And I just want to follow up on my little piece of paper. When I had asked Bruce to just do a write-up, and so he did highlight the Harbor Fest and the Arts and Crafts as well as the Music Festival as really that impacts so many parts of the village, as you heard from all the different areas. But with the tree removal applications that really have occupied a good part of time because of the multiple visits and inspections. But what I will, what we do want to point out that the majority of these proposed removals are with dead or decaying trees that have been verified by a licensed arborist. And then that gets verified with an onsite inspection. And so we continue to see homeowners being very proactive. Also, what has been noted is that insurance companies have been very proactive in asking homeowners to abide by looking at their trees, knowing what's going on and having branches cut and making sure it's, you know, for safety. So there's an increase movement really by the insurance companies to be proactive and making sure homeowners are taking those steps. So I just wanted people to be aware of that in the village. If you haven't had that, you may, depending on who your insurance company is. And then for the three fire inspections investigations that were looked at in September, one was a homeowner who was melting and applying tar on his driveway. So that was a first. One was a lithium ion battery fire, which is something that we all have to be aware with the electric bikes and the batteries that people have if they're storing them in their garage. To be aware, there can be a safety issue there. And then one was a commercial establishment that had wood burning and didn't. It activated the system, which made it go on. So just to be aware, there continues to be demand on all the, on every part of the Building Department. And now I'm going to move on to the docks and harbor. Busy again, Harbor Fest, Music Festival. But the big thing that happens as we get into September is many of the employees that are the older staff members, they're all back in college. And the Harbor Masters were, have recruited some younger staff. There's a brand-new staff that started in the middle of August and they've picked up a lot of the responsibilities of the older staff. And what the feedback that we've gotten from all the boaters that they seem to be very happy. So that's great to hear. With regard to the Outer Mourning Field, there were eighteen checks, marine checks in the Outer Mourning Field. They were all clear. There were an average number of twenty-four point six boats through the month of September out in the Outer Mourning Field. Five point one that were anchored in addition to the moorings and then two point nine, so might as well call it three in the private property moorings. Two hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred gallons of marine waste were removed. So that's the total amount from May first through September thirty-first. There were nineteen additional marine patrols in the other areas. Again, they were clear. And then the Harbor Masters, both Harbor Master Borey and Durie, as well as two of the Southampton Town Marine Patrol helped for security during the whaleboat races with harbors, you know, so we do have to make sure we have that safety there. And the whaleboat races seemed to be a great success this year, given the incredible weather and lots of fun. Other calls of service that we had were three E C L checks, which those are the smaller fish. There were three tickets that were issued. As Mayor has already pointed out, there was one B W I. Sorry, many of you probably saw that in the paper. It was just a an event that went on and on, shall we say? There were two boat accidents. There was one speeding vessel. There was one possible boat fire and there was one sunken vessel. And then with regard to see the the month, it was a total of one hundred and twenty-three thousand and we continue to have a good year and it's above last year's numbers. So with that, I will pass it on.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the department committee reports?
I'm of it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hayter. Have a second. Seconded by trustee Plum. All those in favor? Posed, so moved. That brings us now to our public comment section. We have fifteen minutes of public session, input for comments and questions, limit three minutes per speaker on any of the reports or anything that you just heard. Mary Ann?
Good evening. Mary Ann Eddie, ninety-six Hampton Street. Just one comment and maybe I misheard, but when you were talking about the meeting that we had with Gobler, my understanding previous to that conversation and didn't change when we had that conversation is that the testing on the intro caucus that tested up with human DNA, whether or not it was alive or dead, was only done at the sewage treatment plant. Historically, we've never looked at that except at the sewage treatment plant, but we will this year. So what I heard you say was that all of the human DNA has been dead, and I don't think that's true. I can go back and look, but I think it's the sewage treatment plant we were particularly interested in.
Don't think I, no, if I said all of it is dead, I might have misspoken, but I do think that the vast majority of human DNA that we're catching in the bays comes from the sewage treatment plant. We can verify that because part of the conversation with Dr. Gobler is that we said we we absolutely want to follow up tests to verify dead versus live bacteria with with an assay or a test that shows whether it's dead or alive. I mean, just there's a certain logic to our sewage treatment plant has has had over three point five million dollars of effluent in a single month of August. It's rated for two hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. What was the number of boat waste that we carted away?
Two hundred and twelve.
Gallons?
Yeah.
Over the course of the entire summer? The testing that shows up in Doppler Gobler's reports is that we have maybe less than two percent in most of the bay, slightly higher around Long Wharf and the bay near the sewage treatment plant. We're testing, I want to make sure we test that to make sure that we can verify that that DNA is from the sewage treatment plant and is dead.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I think we want to do going forward.
Yes, but but even if I could finish, even Dr. Gobler said in that meeting that if, because he was not aware that we had a program for tying off the valves, a program for inspection, a public and he said, that's, that would be his recommend, that's what you can do. He knows that we do that now and he shifted from that conversation, from that point in the conversation forward to, yes, the focus should be on stormwater. That is unfiltered contamination going into the bay. We all know that. We believe, I believe, that the overwhelming majority of bacteria detected from the DNA source tracing is dead bacteria. We will confirm that. But even if it's not, it is such a small portion of the overall Entro cockeye bacteria that we are seeing there relative to animal feces that our focus can and should be on stormwater remediation. And I believe Dr. Gobler agrees with that polar.
Well, I absolutely think he is promoting us getting on top of our stormwater dischargeers. His, I'm going to interpret what he's saying. He's very concerned about nitrogen. And nitrogen is what's coming from stormwater. And long term, the health of our base is very directly tied to nitrogen pollution coming in from stormwater. So he has been telling us for years that stormwater really needs our attention.
Agreed. Thank you. I think that's three minutes. I think we could, we could spend. Well, listen, I think we could spend, and we should, talk more about this. We need to moving forward, but for this portion of the meeting.
Can I have one quick? Would it make sense to do a baseline measurement in, say, February? When the boats are largely gone and the people are just, live bacteria versus dead in the same locations, just have kind of a starting point.
What we are doing is we're continuing through October. Usually we would have finished testing by now, but we're going to continue that at Windmill Beach and up Long Wharf throughout October. And if we're still seeing that there are boats there and we're still getting positive results for our Entro caucus, we don't do the microbial source tracking until later in the year. That's a very long process. But we will continue as long as we're seeing Entro caucus, sort of along your, you know, your thinking, but we're just going to do it continuously.
We'll have three more weeks of it.
Yeah, and if we're still seeing it.
Because I don't want to leave misimpressions. The Entro cockeye is largely animal bacteria. So we're going to continue to, and that's mostly stormwater. So it's good we're continuing to test out October, but the valuable test for ruling out source DNA as being a problem for human bacteria is going to be the assays that distinguish live versus dead. That must be done.
It's not an either or. We will do all of it.
Are we doing that in October is my question.
Well, my understanding, and I may be wrong, but I think that we do the assays for live versus dead later. It's not happening now. It happens like with the microbial source tracking.
Okay, so we need to verify that because the doctor wasn't clear on that. I know we did that in two thousand and twenty. I don't think we did that in two thousand and twenty-four. He was going to verify that. We need to verify that.
That's what he said he was going to come back to us, right?
Yeah.
I'm going to end it here. And I just want to say, I have my own opinion about this. I'm not going to speak on it tonight. But I have my own opinion and how we should move forward. So we'll talk about this. We'll discuss this further in the future, but it's something that needs to be addressed. I'm personally very upset at what's going on at Windmill Beach and Haven's Beach. And I've said this multiple times, we need to find the source, exactly what it is and fix it. Try to keep on continually going around in circles. So we'll end it on that.
That's all right.
Anybody else? Anthony?
Good evening. Anthony from McDowell, eighty-eight Union Street. So I am eagerly awaiting the results of the traffic study. Just a few comments leading up to that. While the traffic on Union Street had, the overall volume of traffic has certainly gone down since Labor Day, like it always does. Large trucks remain an issue on that street as they are on many streets in Sag Harbor. One thing that has sort of started, I've noticed just during the daytime, it's always been an issue lately. It's been starting to occur at night as well. Large trucks, I'd probably get waken up two or three times a night now with large trucks coming down the street. I think a lot of it has to do with the ongoing construction work on one fourteen and those trucks are taking Union Street as a shortcut. But, you know, once sort of that lid is open, you know, even when that construction is done, I'm concerned about it becoming a habit. One thing that I was, you know, I was looking, one thing I was looking at was to see, looking at the code, was to see if there was specifically a rule in Sag Harbor about engine brakes. I did not see anything. That doesn't mean that doesn't exist, but I didn't see it. If it doesn't exist, I mean, maybe that is something that should become a local ordinance about use of engine brakes.
I do too. They just do it to be jerks.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm not a fan of signs, but, you know, just it's street acting, but, you know, maybe you need to have a large sign at each of the main roads. You know, once this is becomes an ordinance, you know, maybe there needs to be a large sign at each of the main road entries in the Sag Harbor, no engine brakes. I mean, it's, it's, it's a problem, especially on one fourteen. Then when I was looking for that though, I also saw a, I'll try to be quick here because I'm running out of time. I didn't find anything about engine brakes, but I did see two sixty-five dash eight truck exclusions, which is which is streets that specifically are supposed to not have trucks of more than 10,000 pounds or five tons, tractor combinations, trucks as well. This was late last, as far as I can tell, this was last updated in 2001, 24 years ago. And I think, you know, there's some big, big streets here. You know, there's Division Street, Harrison Street, Hempston Street, Jermaine, Madison, Main Street, Rector Street. Most or all of those streets are technically not supposed to be for, you know, large trucks except for global delivery. Now, I'm wondering if, first of all, that needs to be enforced more. And secondly, if this list, which hasn't been changed since in 24 years, needs to be expanded to other villages in the street. Because I can tell you, if there's a truck driver who is actually following rules and not taking Jermaine Avenue, he's going to go down Union Street, right? So that's where I'm at with this.
Council, do you have that code provision?
No.
Anthony, could you send that to us? Just to save us the, not now, not now. I just want to make sure we have that in the future and give that to our traffic consultants to look at as part of their. Sure. Thank you. And just to, you know, I heard you say you're anxiously awaiting the traffic study. Just the timeline, what they've completed is the data collection. They're going to come to us at the next board meeting and propose, you know, a phase one or phase two of a study.
You were also, you know, talking about easy fixes, right?
Yes.
To do right way. And I think, you know.
One-way streets, things like that, are some of the things they're thinking about. And they had turning counts on your street to see.
Yeah.
And they'll make some recommendations. I don't know what they'll be.
Right, we just get their recommendations.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Different topic?
Okay.
When we were here in July, or maybe it was August, we were talking about the Havens Beach watershed study. And that was assigned to H2M.
Yes.
I'm on that committee. I haven't heard a word about it. And are we working on that?
We are waiting approval from New York State to approve the list of committee members. I sent it to them. I followed up with them today, and we haven't. They wanted to see a draft of who we appointed and then sign off on giving us a final draft, a final go ahead. That hasn't happened. I followed up again today. And hopefully, next month, we'll be able to do the appointment of the committee and then get to work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anybody else? That brings us to introduction. 2025 Suffolk County Community Development, Citizen Ideas Wanted. We do this every year, correct?
This is the money for the grant to go for handicap access, door handles, levers, ramps. We use the side locks and the curb cuts in the past. So it's just inviting the public if they have suggestions.
Do I need a motion?
I'm moving.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Haye. I need a second. Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That brings us to the introduction of a resolution to schedule a public hearing on Wednesday, November 12, 2025, to consider a local law mending Chapter 212 to enact legislation regulating the use of single-use plastics. This is the Skip the Stuff legislation. You want to give us a brief on it, council?
This is the legislation that was promoted by your environmental advisory committee and presented to the board. This is entitled, you know, called Skip the Stuff. But it's basically regulates single-use plastic in the village. And it provides that no food service establishment will provide eating utensils, common packets, napkins, or extra eating containers to take away customers, whether directly to some customer through a third-party courier service, third-party food delivery service, unless it's requested by the customer. And it goes through the different third-party food delivery services restrictions and enforcement as well. And it allows for, I think, a warning to be issued until violations that occur before May 25, 2026. And that's sort of to allow for an education of food establishments in the village.
And the way that I interpret the local law is that you're providing those utensils, but they're in a separate area. The customer has to take them or the customer would have to ask, can I have a fork or a knife?
The customer has to ask for them, specifically ask for them. And if it's an online request, they have to, the default provision online has to be so that the customer, so that they're not provided. The customer has to.
What about setting up an area, an area where they can choose the utensils?
Yes, that's the solution that's.
Because I think that that's what's basically happening throughout the village anyway.
Yep.
They're, or they're asking you if you want a knife. So this stuff is already.
So this is patterned after the Village of East Hampton, so the law which they adopted as well and other municipalities.
Okay, so we're introducing it. We'll have the public hearing for some input on November 12.
Yep.
I need a motion to introduce. Motion by Trustee Plum. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. That brings us now to our discussion items. We already had Susan Rabald from Cityscape Consultants that will leave us with the Sag Harbor Historical Society and the Old Burial Ground. We have Nancy Aukkenbach and Zach Studenrot this year. I guess Zach's presenting, right, Nancy?
Good evening. Zach Studenrot for the Sag Harbor Historical Museum. This is not the first slide. This is number two.
Yes, it is. There it is.
I guess we missed that. Anyway.
Carrie is on helping me because we've had some issues with the slide. So Carrie is sharing her story for us.
Thank you, mayor and trustees, for having us. I'm joined by Nancy Aukkenbach, who is the director of the museum. And the reason for our being here this evening, I know you have a long agenda, so very brief, is that you may all recall that we, the museum, have a stewardship agreement with the village pertaining to the maintenance and interpretation of the historic burial ground. The village owns the site, and you therefore have responsibilities for maintaining it. But to augment that, the museum has entered into this agreement for the purpose of providing public education, tours, which we give in the summertime, and also when we are able, through writing grant proposals and soliciting donations, to make improvements to the site. And so this is one of our improvements that I wanted to share with you. We're very excited about it. The top two images, to the left, you see the old Whalers Church on Union Street prior to the hurricane of 1938, when it boasted that extraordinary telescopic steeple, which came down in the hurricane of 1938. And you see to the right is fragments of that steeple occupying the burial ground next door. If we could go up to the next image, slide up a little bit. There we go. As a result of the steeple coming down in 1938, a whole cluster of very large and wonderful headstones were crushed and were pushed to the ground. And there they've been since 1938. We, the museum, received a, applied for and received a grant of $10,000 from the Robert David Lyngardner Foundation. We solicited for additional private funds, which we received to augment that grant, the purpose of which was to restore, there are five primary monuments of the BB family. And then there are secondary smaller stones in the cluster. So all in all, there are 12 headstones there. These are important. Perhaps you've heard of the BB Windmill, which stood here in town. It was built in 19, sorry, 1820. It was sold and moved to Bridgehampton in 1835. And it's now owned by the town of Southampton. It's on the Berwind Estate on Ocean Road in Bridgehampton. But it was built here by patriot Lester, Captain Lester BB. And he was the patriarch of this family. And so honoring his service and his legacy here in the village, we undertook the preservation, restoration of these stones. If we could just move, nudge up to the next image. One more cheerful one. And move up to the. There we go. Last May, we launched the project by sponsoring a one-day volunteer opportunity for people who are interested to come and see what's involved in this kind of work. We had about 15 people come and start the process of beginning to dig these stones out. Stone, by the way, is actually porous, and it soaks up water. And it's quite fragile in that state. And so what we had to do first is to free the stones up from the ground, which they'd been sunken into since 1938. And that was that process. So again, we're working on that area. Let's go to, so that was back in May. And then the actual work we undertook in September. These are two more images. The one to the right unfortunately got sideways. Turn ahead. But this shows the stones being excavated and prepared for repair. Then we returned in September. If you just move up to the next image.
Sorry, just try.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't look up. So here they are. These, it's deceptive. These stones are over five feet tall. They weigh about 600 to 700 pounds. And so we need someone on site who has the skill and experience to work with stones of this type. The first thing that we say to volunteers coming is to be very, very careful. We'd rather have a stone broken than a leg broken. And so we take every care to make sure that anyone involved is aware of how difficult this process can be. In the lower right-hand corner, you see that white stripe. That is actually the bottom of that headstone, inserted into a groove in a colossal piece of brownstone or sandstone that measures about six feet in length. And that alone weighs 600 to 700 pounds. Luckily, that was perfectly level. So we didn't have to excavate it and prop it up because that whited stone to the left, all in four pieces, is what is to be erected on top of that. Okay, next. So there are the five major stones all in a row, looking from the opposite direction. They've been lifted up. The bases have been plumbed so that when the pieces are attached to them, they're all nice and straight. And so those five, all in a row, were our main focus of action. Okay, next image. Okay, that's just a detail of that one I was describing before. The actual stone is white marble. You can count one, two, three, four pieces. The process entails dry fitting the pieces to make sure that you have as much stone as is available. All the pieces are then drilled. Three or four pins are inserted into both sides because an epoxy adhesive is simply not strong enough to withstand the potential impact of a stone. It will just fall over. So the adhesives have to be supplemented with pins that are drilled into the stone, top and bottom. Okay, next. Oh, I think it's, and this was the best image of all, and it's sideways. So you'll kindly need.
We can compensate.
If we can compensate for that, this was the dramatic moment. This is the tripod that's lifting up that very, very large stone just to show you what's entailed in the process. But we can move on because you've got a long night ahead. Okay, can we have that? Next. You know, the tech department and I are going to have to get together ahead of time.
Sorry.
It's not your fault.
There are handouts on the table as well.
The pictures are good.
More to watch these.
The pictures are good.
Okay, and then we'll go to the next. I think we're about to wrap it up. Here we go.
Then we can.
And so all these stones, once they've been pinned, adhesives, et cetera, they have to be propped up. They have to set overnight. I don't want to dramatize this, but you can see the lights are on in the church. The sun is setting. It's now about 7:15. And we're up there gathering tools because it's been a long day. But like many jobs, and we all do various things, you know, there's only an hour left, so you got to stick with it. No time to go home. And the next, I think it's the last slide. Well, next to last. There they are. And I'm not exact, but they're all about five feet in height. This is the BB family, which has largely disappeared in town. It may be descendants, but one's quite prominent. And I think the next slide is the last. Yeah. These will continue to lighten. They're pure white marble. We use a cleaning agent, which has been approved by the National Park Service. The discoloration is on the surface. It's a bio growth. bio growth. And the application of the D-two material kills off that growth, and they will turn quite white over time. And then we'll return every year or two to, to, to keep them white, because they continue to host this, this growth. Anyway, we're very, very proud of, of the work we're doing there. We will continue to fund as we can. These are smallest projects, but we have a very good relationship with the Gardner Foundation, which just supports. And a couple of years ago, we did the Patriots. There were twenty-four Patriots at the site. And we thought that in, with respect to next year, being the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, we're applying to the Gardner Foundation again to do the Patriots' wives. We think this is only fitting. They were holding the fort. The men were all shooting people. And we're thinking they, and we have got about fifteen.
I was gonna say, are there twenty-four? I don't know, fifteen?
So, so that's our hope, that we will raise the funds to do that next year.
I have a, when we met a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
Zach, the three of us.
Yeah.
You had, get, shown me the presentation. I was very impressed at the work that you've done. But you had mentioned to me that you had put in addition on the historical building to house the archives of the village.
We have an application, which has been approved by all, all, all.
But you also said to me that the fee was ninety-five hundred dollars to do this?
We, we've expended ninety-five hundred in regulatory fees that are, yes.
From the, to the village?
From the village.
I would like to, if we can, and with the approval of the trustees, get that money back to you to help you restore the headstones of the wives of these patriots.
Did that include legal fees, I assume?
There weren't any legal fees. These were all, the, the building fee was the, the building permit was the worst fee. There's a thousand.
The clerk has given me a, a look of horror, but as the mayor, I would like to make a motion to have those, have those fees, any fees that the villagers charge you.
Yes.
Restored to you, because you're doing business for the village and restoring our village.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, thank you. That, that'd be very great.
So I'll make the motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. So any, any. She'll make it work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach.
Good job.
Great work, everybody. Thank you so much.
So that brings us to our action items. First one is authorizing an agreement with Millennium Strategies for Flex Grant Consulting Services. This is what the deputy mayor had spoken about in his report about this fee to identify grant opportunities and, and help us, consult us to put the applications forward, identifying grants and, and help us to put the applications forward. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Plum to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us to a resolution, accepting the resignation of Jay Hamel Willoughby, member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Plum to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I'd just like to thank Mr. Willoughby for all his service to the Zoning Board of Appeals. He was an outstanding member. And I just want to wish him health and, you know, happiness in his future. That brings us to the resolution approving appointment. This is to replace him, Monica Olker, as a member to the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to accept the annual audited financial statement for the Justice Court for the fiscal year, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to accept the annual audited financial statements for fiscal year ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Motion by Trustee Plum to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to authorize the refund of a Zoning Board of Appeals application. This is eight hundred and fifty dollars to Nancy Argento. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to authorize the refund of a Zoning Board of Appeals application. This is five hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-six cents.
That's a different name.
Typo?
Yeah, this is for Helen Russell, who is, and that five hundred and fifty-six dollars is correct.
So this is for Helen Russell for the ZBA.
We have the application forward to the ZBA while we were going through the local law for the A D O.
Got a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion made by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution for the authorization to hire E M T B slash drivers. We have Joseph Zot, Mary Bridget Mendez, Tyler Kirchner, Matthew Gomez, and John Barry. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Kane, excuse me, Trustee Kane. I just made you Deputy Mayor. So go.
I like that.
Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. And that, that's at a rate of twenty-nine dollars an hour. Resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a master equipment lease purchase. Is this your broom badger?
Yeah, it's over here.
Street sweeper. Do I have a motion? Might as well make the motion, Bob. All right. Motion by Trustee Plum, second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution authorizing piling work at Marine Park Basin. And this is with Costello Marine Contracting.
Right, we just need to replace. So moved.
This is thirty thousand, six hundred dollars, cost of doing business, I'm assuming. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Three thousand dollars of piling? That's a lot.
Yeah. So a motion by Trustee Kane, second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to award the bid for the Village Hall Lighting retrofit project. This is that, I believe we're going to L E D lights, right, Mary Ann?
Yes.
So I need a motion. Motion by Trustee Plum. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution authorizing to change the date of the November regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. It was originally scheduled for November eleventh. I believe that's Veterans Day.
Yes.
Correct? So we're going to change it to November twelfth?
Yes.
At, which is a Tuesday, at, excuse me, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
At six P M. So Wednesday, the twelfth, at six P M. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor? Opposed? So moved. Resolution to accept the resignation of Dave Harvey, architect consultant from the Board of H P B A. Do I have a, excuse me, Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review? Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Trustee Plum to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Resolution to authorize the Village of Sag Harbor Justice to submit a grant application for financial assistance to the state of New York Unified Court System. Is this a typical grant that we do?
It's manual.
Manual? So I have a motion? It's for thirty thousand dollars.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Carrie Garapie, Secretary of the Sag Harbor Volunteer Ambulance, requests authorization to add the following individuals to the insurance rolls effective October fourteen, twenty twenty-five, as probationary members. That's Nathan Glad and Rain Joy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane. I have a second. Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Richard Scavoni, Secretary to the Sag Harbor Fire Department, requests authorization to accept the resignation of Stanley Martin, and asks that he be honored, added to the honorary role of the Sag Harbor Fire Department. I just want to say, I've known Stan, know Stan Martin.
Yes.
Long time, really. Outstanding member and an outstanding individual. And as all of us in the fire department are getting older, Stan has definitely done his service to our village. And I just want to wish him health and happiness. Do I, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Robert J. Drake, Chief of Police, requests authorization to put the following abandoned surrendered vehicles out to bid through govdeals.com. You have a two thousand eleven Honda Ridgeline, two thousand thirteen Chevrolet Malibu. Do I need a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second. Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. I need a motion to accept the August twenty twenty-five bank reconciliations and collateral report.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us now to action items, special event, and special use permits. Matthew Malone of the Sag Harbor Elementary P T A requests permission for the annual Sag Harbor Elementary School Halloween Parade through the Business District on Friday, October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, from one thirty to three o'clock P M. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Maxwell Yardley of the Sag Harbor V F W requests permission to have the Veterans Day Parade from the Civil War Memorial to the American Legion on Tuesday, November eleventh, from ten A M. to eleven A M. Do I have a motion? Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Kristen Santori of the Church requests authorization to have the twenty twenty-five annual holiday makers market on November twenty-ninth to the thirtieth, from eleven A M. to five P M. Also requesting permission to place a sign on the grassy area of Long Wharf beside Mash Park and at the edge of Route one fourteen, from the sixteenth to the thirtieth of November. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thomas G. Cartino of the Sag Harbor Lions Club requests authorization to have the annual Christmas tree sale at the Windmill from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, to January fifteenth, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Kane. I have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Hay. All those in favor?
Move it.
Opposed? So moved. Ellen Dioguardi, President of the Chamber of Commerce, pressed permission to have the annual ragamuffin parade through the Business District of the, through the Custom House on Sunday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, from one to two thirty P M. Also requesting permission to place a sign, the grassy area of Long Wharf, from October fifteenth to the twenty-sixth. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second. Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Susan Conklin of the Bridgehampton Union Free School District requests permission to have a Halloween carnival at the Custom House, nine twelve Main Street, on October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, from eleven A M. to three P M. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second. Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And then it brings us now to approve the payment of the bills. Motion to approve payments presented in warrant number eighteen, in the amount of four hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and three cents. Warrant number nineteen, in the amount of two hundred forty-nine thousand, twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Warrant number twenty, in the amount of nine thousand, twenty dollars. Warrant number twenty-one, in the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. Warrant number twenty-four, in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and one dollars and ninety cents. Does anybody have a problem taking all these payments together?
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That brings us to our public comments section. Fifteen minutes public session. Input for comments and questions limits three minutes for speaker. Anybody like to speak? That brings us to a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hay to have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Plum. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is.